Gene Rousseau is going to make public comment.
Are we going to pull that Deer Creek Bridge?
I'm getting away here.
That was in the arena news.
That's fine.
Morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. If you'd please stand and join us in the flag salute led by Supervisor Ashida. Remain standing for a moment of silence, thank you.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. All right, we'll take up our first item this morning, which is Board of Supervisor matters, beginning with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to go over a few items, hope everybody had a very nice Fourth of July holiday. First of all, just a real quick Summer Night Lights recap for District Two. We've been having very good events so far in the communities of Alpon, Allen'sworth. They've averaged 170 people per night over the first three nights. In early March, they've already finished all of their events, but the turnout was actually much better than expected initially, and may continue to grow each year. Pixley did very, very well, and in their first event, our most recent event, they had 270 people attend. And in Tipton, they had 170 attend their first evening. And Tulare kicks off their Summer Night Lights events this week. So, really, do you think this is a great program, and I think it's making a difference for people in the unincorporated communities where there are no activities for the youth during the summer, or there are very few. Next week, I will be having a meeting with Self-Help Enterprises to continue the work on a community water project in Mike Ennis' favorite community, and that's Oakville or Highland Acres. We will be hopefully working towards some sort of solution. The community is stepping up and indicating a desire to create a system and maintain it by forming their own mutual water company. And then lastly, we've got a San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting next week. And we have not had the actual numbers presented to us, but so far, the projections for the renewal rates actually look a little bit better than the industry trend. So SJVIA is doing very well, and I think it's something we can all look forward to. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Cox?
Last week, last couple of weeks, I've been doing interviews for new hires at First Five Commission. And last week, we did interview several people and hired Michelle Morrow to be our new executive director of First Five Tulare County. So that was, I think, time well spent. We were able to interview several people and find out that our internal candidate was the best one for the job. Also, I'd like to say something about the Summer Night Lights programs. Even in the many years that we've been doing this now, I still see, even reported in newspapers and radio, I still hear Friday Night Lights, Saturday Night Lights, all kinds of Night Lights, but it's Summer Night Lights. I think we're doing very well countywide. I'd like to give a little bit of my time over to Allison Pierce, let her talk about the total attendance. We don't have all of the numbers in yet, but it looks, I'd like to have you hear it from her, how promising the numbers look for this summer.
You get part of this three minutes.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. The numbers do, we have been giving the, been getting the numbers from each community representative. Last year, we peaked at over 19,000. We stand, we still have the rest of July and a little bit of August, and we're at 17,000. Dainuba, thankfully, they had at their last event 6,000, and that was their Fourth of July, the combined efforts for their Summer Night Lights, but they've done that every year consistently, but this year was, they shifted the venue, and so the attendance was really large this year. But they themselves have experienced growth across the board, 400, 600, 700 at successive events. So everyone's doing really well, the report's coming back, and all the community members appreciate it, not only the attendees, but the partners. So some of the churches, the public service organizations, they're very appreciative, and they're excited about the rest of the year.
Thanks, so I'm just trying to think if that means we're well on track to double our numbers in attendance for the Summer Night Lights program this year. Just wanted to let Allison also know how much we appreciate her hard work, because this would, program would not happen without her efforts in bringing all of the committees in the different communities together. That's all I have.
Very good. Supervisor Ashida?
Supervisor Vanderpoel brought up an item about the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Organization we belong to, and I received some interesting statistics. Is that when we started our JPA with Fresno, we had about 1,200 employees that were initially in the program, and the program has, has expanded to we have almost 11,000 employees under the program. Because this program is much bigger than just the two counties, it's expanded so much. And on our board, Supervisor Vanderpoel, Worthley, and Ennis serve as representing Tulare County. Tomorrow, I have a meeting tomorrow morning on Tamperance Flat Fresno. Apparently, there's a group that is trying to get Fresno County involved in, in being a participant in applying Prop One funds. And tomorrow evening, there's a meeting update on the San Joaquin Restoration Project, which I'll be attending. On Thursday, I've called a meeting of the Friant Water Users, and we're going to meet and see if we are going to take a role in Prop One funds, to see if Tamperance Flat really fits into the program of the Friant Water Users. There are a lot of questions that aren't answered, and because the California State Water Commission is now putting together the requirements for, for receiving those funds, we all need to get together to see if we are going to apply for Prop One funds for Tamperance Flat. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this last week, I, I went to the Upper Tulie area and was up there Camp Nelson on Saturday for their, their big fundraiser for their volunteer fire department. Continue to see lots of trees dying, lots of dead trees, and we've fortunately been very, very lucky so far. We've had several thunderstorms go through up there and spurred some small fires. I think the biggest one was 17 acres, but all it takes is the right time, and you get some wind and get that fire up in that canopy, and who knows where it's going to go. So it's not just in one area, there are dead trees everywhere. Over 12 million dead trees or dying trees in our Sierra Mountains right now. So it's a real tinderbox just waiting to explode, and hopefully, we're going to get through this season, but if we don't, we're going to have some catastrophic fires. Yesterday, I was at the Success Dam enlargement remediation meeting, and we are still working towards getting the enlargement for Lake Success moving forward to go from 82.5 to 110,000 acre feet. On Wednesday, there'll be a group going to Sacramento to talk to the Corps. Dick Schaefer, Dan Vink, David DeGroth, Walter Bricker, and Steve Drumright will be going up there to work with Mr. Reed and the Colonel that's now in charge, and see if we can't move this project forward. We need to find out if there's going to be stipulations, whether it be widening the spillway due to overtopping issue, or what it's going to take to make this project go forward. It was 2003 when it was all set to go, the groundbreaking ceremony was held, and then it was put on hold. So you can see, this has been an ongoing situation, and millions of dollars have been spent on studying a dam which really, they come to find out, is still pretty stable. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Last Wednesday, there was a East Porterville Water Crisis Water Summit hosted by Devin Mathis, our Assemblyman. Well attended, there were probably about 40 to 50 people there, various stakeholders, including many high-level state agency people, looking for solutions, primarily directed at East Porterville, but of course, the information also kind of spread out around other parts of the county. But the magnitude of the problem in East Porterville has been recognized for some time as being very difficult because of the size of the area with no water, existing water system. Every lot has its own septic system and its own well, and in many cases, of course, we've had, the vast majority of failed wells have been in East Porterville because of the lack of water in the Tulie River these last number of years. So, you know, we, we feel like we're in good shape for the drilling of a single well that will generate sufficient water to be able to provide the water to, to put in the tanks that have been installed and more that are needed in that, in that community. This has become a huge issue. It's not just a matter of putting in tanks, it's finding the water to fill those tanks. And more and more, we're having difficulty acquiring water, because everybody's trying to husband their resources, and their, and it's, the scarcity is such that they're nervous about sharing what water they have, for fear that it will affect their own local residents. And so this, this well would provide that water, and in addition, would provide sufficient water, we think, to hook up about 100 households that are adjacent to existing city water lines. And that, that is a critical aspect, too, again, of sort of making, beginning to make an improvement in that, in that community. The, the, the needs are such that they expect they actually need five wells drilled to supply water for all of that community. And of course, it's not just the wells, it would then be a delivery system. And so it gives you an idea of the magnitude of the problem there, it's really quite extensive. I want to give our thanks to Simon Mathis for having this event and becoming, you know, very actively engaged in trying to find solutions to, to this very major problem. Of course, the biggest solution would be a whole lot of rain this coming winter and snow, and let's hope that that happens. A matter brought up by Supervisor Ennis about timber, we have a matter on our consent calendar this morning, I wasn't going to bring it up, but I think I will now because he mentioned it. I too had to make a kind of a flying rush up to it. We have a little cabin up above Pinehurst in the Sequoia National Forest, and I was shocked, I was, I've been shocked before at the amount of dead timber, but shocked the new, at the new development of dead timber. What we're seeing now are on the, on the tops of the ridges where, as you would expect, there's the least amount of water, trees, large old-growth trees just dead by the hundreds. And, and a number of trees, the first sign of a problem is when you, in a distance, see the kind of green of the trees you're used to, being all of a sudden, they're kind of a pale color. That's a tree that's already dead and is in stages of dying, and there are many, many of those trees that are now becoming visible, and it's going to get worse this summer. So we have a letter going, part of our agenda this morning is to send a letter to the Governor's Office. Actually, it's going to be to the California Natural Resources Agency. Under federal law, there is a categorical exclusion, which reduces this significantly, the amount of environmental work and so forth that needs to be done on national forests, and allows for 3,000 acre, up to 3,000 acres of, of land, and there's no limit in terms of, you could have 3,000 acres designated in, you know, several of those in a single watershed. And it certainly fits this situation that we have here now, which is one caused by drought and the beetle infestation. That would allow the Forest Service to go forward, but we have to have a designation from the Governor's Office in order to do that. Currently, we have none. And so when we were in Sacramento last, we made this one of our priorities to try to get that accomplished. We were advised that the Governor's Office was looking at that, and we think the time for looking is well past, it's time to make a designation, and then, then we have to apply the pressure of the Forest Service to actually do something, because this gives them the authority, but then they have to actually do something, and that's another matter altogether. But this is the first step, so we will continue. And I just talked to Debbie Vaughn, whatever we need to do as a Board of Supervisors, and me as an individual, and as a chair, we need to go to Sacramento, and we certainly, you know, do whatever we can to expedite this process, we're willing to do that, because this is a very, very serious problem. All right, that will conclude our supervisor's comments, and we'll move now to the public comments section of our meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board of matters which are within our jurisdiction but are not on today's agenda are invited to come forward and give us their public comment. I do have a public comment form filled out, a little unusual, because it's filled out by our CIO, Gene Rousseau. So Mr. Rousseau, you have, you have the floor, three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Gene Rousseau, CIO. This is just an announcement that we, we've automated our boards, commissions, and committees. We put it on our website, so applications for advisory boards, commissions, and committees can now be submitted online. Online application is user-friendly, application process will be more streamlined. This is all written by IT, so. Online access to applications increases county transparency, which is important to our office. To apply, go to the clerk of the board website, and, and we invite you to participate in the process. So I want to thank IT publicly for doing a great job in bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the members present today? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period, bring it back to, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Bill Ryland, I'm actually an attorney, I'm representing my client Chuck, Charles Keel here, here on his behalf.
Charles, what's your address?
27351 Avenue 196, Strathmore, California.
And we are here to request the board's assistance in inquiring into, and hopefully helping us resolve an issue with some, what we claim are improperly and unfairly assessed property taxes on several parts of real property. There was some property that was, my client's mother owned property in a trust that was held back in 2003, there was some lot line, I'm just trying to give you a real brief summary of the history of the properties. There was a lot line adjustment done back in 2003. In the process of that, it took several years before the taxes were, were reassessed on the new property, on the new, the new division of the property. In the meanwhile, my client's mother was suffering from dementia and was legally incompetent, but she ended up transferring the property in 2005 to Mr. Keel's business. That transfer triggered a reassessment of the properties. However, in 2009, once that transfer was discovered, the transfers of the property were rescinded, and it was returned back to the trust of my client's mother. When, once the properties were, once the transfers were rescinded, the property taxes were supposed to have been returned to the base values. However, there's a period of time between 2006 and 2008 where the properties were assessed at a much higher rate. And when, once the transfers were rescinded, all of those property taxes should have been returned back to the base value. However, as it stands now, just kind of cut forward to it, as it stands now, there's 100, a little over 130,000 currently owed on the property, and we're coming up on the deadline to get those paid before there's any foreclosure, default sale.
I would like to just interrupt you a little bit. This is, the question, the initial thing is within our jurisdiction, and actually, we have no jurisdiction over this issue. This is the assessor's appeal board issue and the assessor's office. In the event that you have the ability to file an appeal of a decision from that board to this, to this Board of Supervisors, but we really have no jurisdiction over this particular issue, it would be something you would really need to take up with the assessor's office and the assessor's appeal board, and your client's shaking his head, which tells me he's maybe already done that, I don't know.
We tried this.
But we have no, we have no authority over this.
They told us to come to you.
I don't know why they would tell you that, we have nothing to do with assessments, or how they're said, or that's all done by the independently elected assessor's office and his staff, and we have no, we have no authority over it. The only authority we have is through an appeal process, and even that is very limited, because the statutes are what they are, and they can be very draconian in terms of deadlines and dates and so forth, and if you miss those dates, then we're told, we have no jurisdiction. It's not a court of equity here, it's just a court of law.
When we tried to do that, they gave us, they sent the money back. They wouldn't do this.
Have you filed an appeal with the Assessment Appeals Board?
No, they told us we had to start, this is the second step, and then the appeals court.
The Appeals Board is where you'd need to go, I mean, because if you can't work out something with the staff, then your next step is to file an assessment, I'm sorry, the Assessment Appeals Board, they're the ones that actually have a hearing on these issues and render a decision.
We'll get back with the assessor's office and the appeals board. Once that's done, then, then the board has limited jurisdiction over.
There's a provision for appeal, but you need to look very carefully at the statutes, because it's almost an appeal without any kind of, again, we don't have any juris, we have no authority to change from the law. If we found that they made an error, a legal error, we can, we can rectify that on appeal. But if the, if it's not a legal error, we're very limited in what we can do as a board.
It's definitely a legal error, so.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to address this this morning? All right, seeing no, we will close the public comment period, and we will take up the consent calendar. I have nothing, I've been notified of nothing needing to come off, handled separately. Do any of the members have items they wish to handle separately this morning?
Mr. Chair, I'd like, I have one question on item 20, doesn't need to be pulled, if I can ask staff a question on item 20, the Peter Malik Park in Goshen.
Is there someone that's going to address this matter? Mr. Cohen, I see you're getting up.
My question's an easy one. Is this the basin park, or is it the park adjacent to the new subdivision?
Good morning, it's that, it's next the housing project.
It's not the basin park.
No, sir.
That's all I have.
I do have a question, and then I think there's one item that I had talked to Gene about, and he said that it was set for closed session, we might want to go to closed session on, and that is item 11, and that's related to the Balch Park project. I'd like to visit with counsel regarding that item. And then item 16, I do have a question for staff that's related to the Deer Creek Bridge project. I know the, the request from staff is to rebid the project. What is the delay that's going to be caused by doing so?
Okay, very good. Mike Spada, RMA. Under the existing schedule, the bridge was slated to be constructed or completed in December 2015. If we re-advertise the bids, the schedule is set forth for April, so it's only a few months to light.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to, do you want to go to closed session? Let's go to closed session on that one, item 11.
Mr. Chair, while we're going into closed session, could we also discuss our public hearing today, item number three, in closed session?
Yes, we can do that. Thank you, the board is back in session after taking some closed session items, and we are now back to our consent calendar. And I will entertain, I see now, Mr. Vanderpoel, do you want to pull one item and just handle it separately?
Mr. Chair, I would like to pull, let's see, it was item 16, and we can handle that separately. And if there are no further comments or questions by members of the public, I would move for approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Second. Any, any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, would you please, we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, we'll take up item 16 this time.
Item 16, I know that there were some irregularities here, and that the project is going to be rebid, but I do not agree with the delay that's going to be caused by rebidding this project, and I would like to see it done sooner, but that's my point.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Cox, please cast your votes. Votes are four to one, Supervisor in favor, motion passes, Supervisor Vanderpoel being in objection. We will now take up our, our timed item, which is an appeal, item number two, three, public hearing, request the resource management agency to deny the appeal filed by Houston Wells, Glen Wells Construction Company, Inc., and affirm the planning commission's approval, as per your statement. Morning, Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, board members, county council, and CIO. Mike Washam, Larry Kenny, RMA. Good morning, today we have an appeal of permit number PSP 14041 for an asphalt batch plant in Goshen. Just to give you a little bit of a project background.
Excuse me, Mr. Washam.
Supervisor, I mean, Mr. Walsh, let me, let me, I have a, I have a script I've read, let me read that, it'll maybe take away some of the things you were going to say, and then we'll set the stage. This is a hearing to consider the appeal related to the Pabbage Construction Special Use Permit PSP 14-041. That permit was approved by the Planning Commission at its May 27 meeting. This hearing is held, being held on July 7, 2015, at 10 minutes to 10 a.m. at 200 South Moony Boulevard by Isaiah, California, and is at the request of Houston Wells, Glen Wells Construction Company, Inc. The hearing is open to the public, however, if any member of the public disrupts the hearing, he or she will be asked to leave. The board shall hear all pertinent evidence offered by all interested persons. The technical rules of evidence shall not be applicable to the hearing, although the board reserves the right to limit evidence to the issuance of this special use permit. Mr. Wells, you have the right to call and examine witnesses, to introduce exhibits, to ask any questions of RMA staff or any witnesses they call, to impeach any witness and to rebut the evidence against you. Any exhibits offered should be given to the clerk, who sits at the front. All persons giving evidence are deemed to be testifying under oath. The parties shall remain civil to each other and any witnesses at all times. RMA staff will give a presentation on this project first, which will be going next. Mr. Wells, you will then make your own presentation, present your own evidence, including the calling of any witnesses. We will then allow for the response by staff and a final response by you. Mr. Wells, at the conclusion of both parties' presentations, we will open this hearing up to public comment. So I'm asked to have representatives identify themselves, I see Mr. Wells is present in the, in the front, and he's the, he's the applicant, I believe, the appellant. Do we have any questions before we begin this process? Okay, so we will begin then with the staff report.
Thank you. The applicant, Pabbage Construction, is currently operating an asphalt batch plant under a temporary use permit. The Planning Commission on May 27 approved a permanent special use permit for PSP 1401 to allow the following, to permanently, make a permanent establishment of the asphalt batch plant on the existing site, to expand the operation from the current 3,700 tons to 8,000 tons per day, and to allow onsite retail and commercial sales of material. Just go over a few of the, the features of this particular project. The applicant has voluntarily agreed to the following community benefits based on the potential impacts to the community and the roads. These are in addition to the standard conditions of approval and the mitigation measures required by SEQA. Basically, there's improvements to Road 64, complete streets programs, an annual maintenance fee, aesthetic improvements, and a voluntary ag easement. Road 64, it was determined through the traffic impact study that the applicant, his proportionate share of, of that road is 77%. Therefore, when they construct the Road 64, their, their, their share cost would be about 73, or $731,000 of the estimated $950,000 to construct. The road is from, it's, it's the construction of, of Road 64 from Avenue 298 on the south of this, south part of that road, up to three, Avenue 304. This is part in conjunction with the Betty Drive extension of 64 as part of the interchange will connect to, down to where 304 is, so this is the completing of that. This will be delivered within one year of the Betty Drive interchange, or upon the closing of the 304 on and off ramps, or by January 1 of 2019, whichever comes first. Also, the applicant has, has chosen to make some improvements for the bike routes to, for safe travel on, on, on. Also, the applicant has chosen to make some improvements for the bike routes for safe travel on roads that improve the safety of bicyclists. I'll click to the next slide. It shows coming, what these routes are. Basically, Bike Route One is in the green, starting at the lower end. It's the extension of the Class One bike path along Goshen Avenue that's in the city of Visalia. This would extend the Class One bike path to Camp Road, and then it would go up Camp Road, cross three oh four, and then up seventy-two, up to Betty Riggin, and then across, over to the west side of the highway. It's mostly striping on the, it's Class One along Goshen, and then it's Class Two the rest, the remainder of the way, or Class Three the rest of the way, which is just signage and some painting of the bicyclists in the road. The second bike route is three oh four, up Effie Drive, and across three oh eight, and then over the pedestrian crossing there. And that, there'll be some construction, some widening along three oh eight, but that's a Class Two route, which is basically a painted stripe line. And then there's some street lighting potential over the overpass of the rail along Betty Drive, as well as paving the parking lot on the retention park basin there. In accordance with the ongoing maintenance for the impacts that the trucks will have on the road, there is an eight and a, eight and a, eight point three cent per ton aggregate fee, which could, at the very maximum production levels, could be close to a quarter million dollars a year. There's aesthetic improvements along landscaping, along one ninety-eight, and that includes a ten-foot mound with a fence on top, trees and shrubs along the mound for beautification, and it's scheduled for a five-year grow out to maturity. The site plan here shows, play with something I just learned about this. It shows the, along here will be landscaping trees, and this along the one ninety-eight. So it's hiding the effect, the view shed of the project from one ninety-eight, and then along Avenue or Road sixty-eight here, there's also going to be a line of landscape here to the shed. Voluntary ag easement as well. They're placing a temporary easement on the adjacent fifteen point nine six acres. The applicant may cease the temporary easement so long as a permanent thirty-two acre easement is put in place. So in case they choose to do some other uses on that land, then at that point in time, they could do that, but they would have to find another suitable area that would cover all of that into then.
And that's a permanent easement.
And that would be a permanent at that point. Response to comments in the Houston's, Houston Wells letter. Number one comment was, there were no notices received by any of the local businesses or the school that a hearing on this proposal for a permanent site was being held. All legal notice requirements for SEQA were met. There was, all property owners within three hundred feet of the project received notice, as well as publishing in the Visalia Times Delta, which is a general circulation newspaper for the county of Tulare, on April twenty-ninth. So all of the legal requirements for noticing were complete. Amount of traffic of approximately eight hundred and sixty-four trucks and trailer loads on a rural road will overtax it, not to mention the fact that the businesses along Road sixty-eight. Well, there must be a little bit of confusion that the trips are actually four hundred and sixty-four, according to the ERA. So it's not eight hundred and sixty, so it's over four hundred trips less than what was claimed in that letter. The impacts to Road sixty-eight are well documented and modeled in the current and future conditions, and in no case do they exceed any SEQA thresholds. The applicant has agreed to construct improvements along Road sixty-four from Avenue two ninety-eight up to Avenue three oh four, as Road sixty-eight will be shut down to through traffic in the near future with the Betty Drive interchange. So the Road sixty-eight is really a temporary route until sixty-four is built out. At that time, the truck traffics will be going up sixty-four. It'll be avoiding the impacts that we're talking about, the temporary impacts, until that gets completed. We were assured this site was only a temporary location for a specific road construction project. There was no representation that the applicant would not apply, or was there any way restricted from applying for a special use permit? In November of two thousand thirteen, there had been some, a working group regarding public work staging area permits, and the conclusion of that was that administrative uses would no longer be used, and applicants should apply for permanent, for special use permits, which is, in this case, is what Pappage had done. What effects are of the asphalt plant on nearby crops and farmland? Well, impacts to agriculture were analyzed in section three point two of the EIR. There's a right to farm notice included. The voluntary easement mitigates any potential conversion of ag land. The project does not encourage further conversion, and the proposed project will not reduce the viability of the surrounding farmland. All the other asphalt plants in Tulare County are located at the material source, which cuts down additional wear and tear on the roadways. We are, why are we allowing this plant to have a permanent site where they have to haul in their material? Well, Tulare County zoning ordinance does not limit the location of asphalt batch plants to their material source. As over time, material sources may change as sources run out and others come available. The alternative analysis in the EIR concluded that after full, substantial, and deliberate analysis, the project site remains the preferred alternative. I'd just like to mention a couple other things for consideration. There was implied that the school, Goshen School, didn't know anything about this. The Goshen Elementary and Visalia Unified District were consulted in the preparation of the traffic impact study. They talked to them about traffic and all that, so they were consulted in that process. Again, I want to mention that Road sixty-eight is only temporary until the Betty Drive interchange is complete, and with that, there will be a realignment and the build out of sixty-four, which will be to the west of the community and avoid these types of impacts in the future. I just, this site here, showing you, the project site is right down here. The white line is sixty-eight, where they're going to be temporarily coming up here, getting on at three oh four, or getting up here to Betty Drive. Or they head south, or they come over here and they get down to one ninety-eight to go east. In the future, the red line is where the truck route will become. Once Betty Drive interchange is done, sixty-four is going to be realigned as part of that project out here to the west, circled down, and it tails off and ends here. The applicant is going to construct from here, build out the road down to here, and complete that part of sixty-four. Therefore, the trucks, when they come out, once this is built out, will be going west and up and staying on sixty-four, thus avoiding any impacts to the community of Goshen in that area. And with that, that ends staff's presentation, and I'll go back to the chairman.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
One quick question. Back on slide five, all the way back, we're talking about the complete streets bicycling programs. And on the front page of our staff report, it says estimated cost, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you go to your slide five, it shows four numbers that total probably five hundred thousand dollars. Which is it?
These number, there's consideration, on the first two, the bike routes, that's part of it for sure, and put in there. And the parking lot improvement is going to be a deferred to long-term. The street lighting was kind of optional, because we're looking at how that project is going to be built out. Some of this stuff won't be able to happen until the construction of the interchange. Whether we can find other alternative ways for the lighting and those things as part of that project, then that would mitigate and reduce some of these expenses. But the bike routes themselves are part of this.
So on slide five, where you show Bike Route One and Two, parking lot and street lighting, those are not costs that are being paid for through this project?
One and two most certainly are, and three as well, the parking lot, the street lighting is something that we investigate further. They had put out that they would agree to do this, but we also, on our end, we're saying we're looking for other alternative funding for this. As far as Road sixty-four as well, we're looking for grants and other opportunities to offset the overall expense.
So the staff report that says total community, or these community enhancements valued at an estimated hundred and fifty thousand, that's not, a hundred and fifty thousand, not correct. It's about four hundred thousand, less the lights. I'm just talking about our, I'm talking about our printed staff report. It says those items are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, these should be the correct numbers.
So the ones on slide five are the correct numbers. Okay, thank you.
I did have a question. I know in the staff report, it indicated that there was a way for the county to expedite the construction of the road improvements by putting money into an escrow account. And I wasn't clear, is that something that, I mean, not that we would do it, but if we did it tomorrow, that would start the process? Or are we still saying it's tied back to the other, the fact we're looking at the Betty Drive interchange?
It's tied to that, because the road's going to connect into that, so.
And it wouldn't be a road to connect into if they did otherwise. Okay.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Wells, it's your chance, and then when, after you've conducted, completed your appeal presentation, then we will open the public hearing.
Trustee Rowdy has a hard copy of this.
Been given to us.
And Mr. Wells, if you could use that microphone, please. Thank you.
Kind of old school I grew up where they didn't have microphones. You just had to speak up. Anyway, I get back to the microphone. My name is Houston Wells. I'm president of Glen Wells Construction Company. My family has owned commercial property in the town of Goshen since nineteen fifty, and have considered ourselves good neighbors to the surrounding communities and businesses. We've been actively donating our time and resources for the betterment of the community, such as churches and parking lots at the school. And I'm here today to demonstrate a special use permit number PSP fourteen dash zero forty-one would be a, it would be a deterrent, not an asset, detriment, and not an asset to our community. The permit has been presented, it would be no harm and undue consequences to the community of Goshen or the county roads. No notices to the local businesses in the school. Well, as I said, RMA said three hundred feet, so that didn't reach them. However, I feel that was important through the ERA that they weren't counted in, because when they counted the traffic, it was during the summertime, and that's in the environmental report. The project-related traffic on county roads that overtax, you have to look at what's coming and what's going. You've got not only trucks delivering, you've got trucks leaving to get another load, you've got trucks picking up loads. And this is on, this is not the count, the oil trucks that are going in, or the, I'd say the rubble trucks for their rap system coming in. None of that is accounted for in the ERA. Okay, so we have assurances as made that there was a temporary location, and I believe back in two thousand and twelve, they did make that note that it was only temporary, not to worry. The unknown effects of the asphalt plant on the nearby crops and farmland. If you've ever been to an asphalt plant, you don't see a lot of birds. You don't see a lot of vegetation around there. It's just the particulates get on the leaves, and there is, it is a detriment to the farming. As far as the location of the project, it's not a material source. We have four plants that have material sources they sit on, that cuts down your traffic, that also, you don't have that extra drive, because part of that is going to be a problem. Some of it would be going, maybe overlapping, and they didn't have to go as far. Okay, we already touched on the three hundred feet, but the amount of traffic that's created by business owners and residents, there are residents there, there are schools there, and the truck routes, everything should have been notified. When you look at the projected related traffic on the county roads that it overtaxes, and you can see that the math is totally wrong for what RMA has, but is real true. We're basing this on facts and not by some mythology. It's true facts. About the eight thousand tons. What if they choose to go over the two hundred days? Because they're asking for twenty-four seven, and they're falling short on their loads. As far as we can calculate, and math doesn't lie. Okay, also on the draft report, it shows that there's five hundred thousand tons per year. Well, when you do the math again, there's going to be around one million, six hundred thousand tons per year. Again, the aggregate source, as far as naming it, or the materials itself, was only named at Rosy Rock. And in the ERR, it does not name the other source, which we know that there's forty percent at least that are coming from C-Max up at Lemon Cove, and that is not included in the ERR or calculated by the San Joaquin Air Board on the effects of what we're going to receive. Okay, as far as the comments, talking with them, on their letter dated the twenty-fourth, I want you guys to pay particular attention to that, because some of the reports were not given to them to calculate what the particulates and what the other effects are going to be. Again, San Joaquin Air Board is calculating forty-seven thousand trucks per year. RMA is only calculating eleven thousand trucks. I don't know why, but I feel that RMA is ignoring the fact that San Joaquin Air Board is counting the trucks gang, coming and going. Again, there's a big discrepancy. And I think that the, I think that the ERR is full of pitfalls. Okay, Caltrans recommendations for no trucks during peak periods. They address that in their letter, five to, staging five to ten, was that ten minutes? Glasses are off. Anyway, the recommendation is there by Caltrans, and also it's there for the San Joaquin Air Pollution Board to point the RMA in the proper direction. And it is not taking under advisement. They're continuing to try to push that amount of trucks down that road. By the way, I did the calculations, and it's about one truck per minute, if you want to go to the peak. Well, we didn't hit on the, who's going to be doing the monitoring, but the monitoring is definitely a big factor. We have not seen any monitoring on the temporary permit, and we have yet to see any future monitoring that the county's going to do to this project. And as far as enforcement, they're just going to run amok. Unless we get accountable, accountability, it's just a joke to even make the rules, because rules without consequences aren't rules at all. Okay, the assurance that was made, if you see there, you can read down through all that, all those dates and find that the applications, we really accommodated them and allowed them in, because technically, they shouldn't even been there to start with. But they had to rewrite the rules, and the county had to pass that. What's that? What page is that? I see better here than there. Okay, anyway, there's a meeting, and we'll refresh your memory on this, June twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, that the board had questioned Mr. Pappage, both Pappage and the board interacted in a field of questions, and one of the questions was, of course, that are you going to sell, are you advertising outside? And the answer was, I assure you, there's no retail sales, other than what we have sold to ourselves. Well, that turned out to be wrong, because they're bidding on RMA material sources, and we also, in two thousand thirteen, and named that as a state plant, and in two thousand fifteen, recently, that plant is named as a source for the bid on the materials, for the rock and the sand, and also the asphalt, coal mix and hot mix. And the RMA evidently didn't catch that either, that they had continued to violate that temporary permit as far as not advertising or doing any public works, other than that road on ninety-nine. And I believe Mr. Worthy had a concern about that, too, and, and they reassured him that there was nothing there. And we have proof that they continue to advertise on the internet, and they continue to get away with it. The original special use permit underlined that Sierra Pacific Materials to allow a temporary public work staging area for a portable asphalt plant. Doesn't say anything about crushers or anything like that, and again, that's to the surprise of the air board, that there's additional equipment there that are not included in that permit. Now, we have more letters to the customers showing the asphalt plant is ready for business through Sierra Pacific, another violation. We have a copy of the bids in two thousand fifteen, in red highlighting that it's a certified commercial plant in Goshen. We have the internet, which still has more advertising. And it's known that Pappage's plant in Goshen already supplied materials on the cart mill project. We're in the process of getting a copy of those tickets through the Freedom of Information Act. Here it was like a class-two sub-base, and, and due to the short timeframe allowed, the copies are not available. Let's go the unknown effects of the asphalt plant on nearby crop and farmland. Like I said, you don't have any birds around the asphalt plant, you don't see any vegetation per se thriving. These are plants that produce fumes and particulates that is not very environmental friendly to our health, or to the plants or anything around it. I know, because I have had asphalt plants. There again, this shows an aerial view of the additional equipment, and this was not included through the ERA. All the units shown are necessary for that operation, that plant needed to be included in the admissions calculations, which it was not. And again, the location of the project is not at the material source, stating and looking at back, that Rosy Rock did not provide enough space to accommodate, and aerial view of Rosy Rock does show that there is room for an asphalt plant in Rosy. The other thing is that when we go back to who's going to monitor this, Flory County Planning is going to monitor it, but we still haven't seen any enforcement. The back part explaining all the areas that we were at, explaining why they couldn't get there, I talked to Coia River Rock, they said that wasn't true about an environmentally sensitive area. They were just merely asking to run their asphalt plant there, or lease their plant, and Doug Reynolds, the manager, said, no, not let them do that. The other interesting part is they, they approached the city of Isalia, and the city of Isalia, they were met with great opposition, as you can see, and there wasn't anything mentioned or put on that, that they went to that area. So that's another interesting point that wasn't included. Well, we're getting to the conclusion in the California, the SEQA section fifteen fifteen one, and it's, the ERA should be prepared with a significant degree of analysis and provide decision-makers with information, enable them to make decisions intelligently, make account of environmental consequences. An evaluation of environmental effects proposed projects need not be exhausted, but the sufficiency of the environmental impact report is to be reviewed into the light in what is a reasonable, feasible. Disagreement among experts do not make the ERA inadequate, but the ERA has summarized the main points of disagreement. Courts have to look not for perfection, but for adequacy, completeness, and good faith effort at full disclosure. And full disclosure means their material sources, and also their sites where they tried to get in. These were not, these were covered up. Okay, the other SEQA section fifteen oh twenty-one refers to the duty to minimize the environmental damage and balance, completing a public objective. A public agency should not approve a project as proposed if there is feasible alternatives, which feasible alternatives to me mean go back to the rock source, and you won't have the traffic, and you won't have the liability. On mitigation measures available, would substantially lessen any significant effects in a project would be on the environment. Based on the information today, as well as above SEQA sections, a special use permit should not be approved at all. And in conclusion, in short, I don't want Goshen to be a dumping ground, because I worked there for many years, and I still feel it's about the money that the county will receive. But if you really look at what they're going to receive, it's not nearly what Pappage is going to receive, because that plant is already up for sale, and it's before we can, you can even put permits on it, there's a number on that plant for sale. Several big companies have already approached and been entertaining the buy of this plant. Once it's permitted, it becomes eight to ten million dollars. If it's not permitted, it doesn't become anything. And I think the county is getting the short end of the stick, we're getting a carrot, and we're getting the, we're getting the wear and tear, and to say on the ERA that the wear and tear on those roads is insignificant is like saying there shouldn't be any wear and tear on any of the county roads, because we've got a lot of traffic, and that's insignificant. Tell that to my tires, my shoes, everything wears out, and I think we're just going to beat our other roads to death. Again, we can save ourselves a lot of problems by this going back to the rock source, and I appreciate your time, and I want you to fully look at this, and you'll see that there's no other way but to deny it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. At this time, we allow our staff to respond to your, your statements, Mr. Wells, and then we'll give you an opportunity to finish up, and then we'll open the public hearing.
I, I just have a couple of comments. As far as public noticing, for this hearing today, which is the same subject matter, the plant, every property owner along Road sixty-eight, from the plant all the way to Betty Drive, was notified for this hearing today, so they've got notice here as well. As far as air board permitting, all of the, all of the, the equipment on use at the site have been, has been permitted through the air board, there's no violations of the air board. As far as material source, I know that Mr. Wells keeps talking about, the, the plant has to be at the material source, however, there is no regulations or ordinances that require that. As far as alternatives, a number of alternative sites were analyzed in the EIR. City of Isalia and another site were not part of that, they independently continued to look, because they did, they did make a good faith effort, looking at all alternatives, so that was just above and beyond what was analyzed in, in, in the environmental report. As far as some of the details, I, you know, I haven't seen this response, so I can't, I can barely even read it, so I need to take, take time, but I, I think the, the staff stands behind the adequacy of the EIR, and, and that's what our position would be.
Mr. Wells, anything further you want to, do you have a question?
One question for Mike, while he's up there. Mr. Wells said that they are currently out of compliance with their existing special use permit, are they?
We have no violations on, on that site. They did, did submit a bid, because they, they didn't, I'm assuming they didn't know that the appeal was coming at the time, that window, they, they thought by this time they would have had a valid permit, not being held up with appeal. They were not the successful bidder, we did not go with them, so.
And who's monitoring?
And then one other thing, I just did want to talk about the number of trips, trips. In the EIR, it does specifically talk, one comment was that it didn't include the oil trucks, it didn't include the aggregate. Yes, table three point one six five talks about the trips, it includes oil trucks, it includes the virgin aggregate, it includes new asphalt, it includes plant employees, even their personal trucks, and, and vehicles, so it's all included in the environmental report.
Can I ask you one more question? Who's monitoring the special use permit in RMA? Whose job is that?
It'd be, it'd be our branch, it'd be the economic development planning branch.
Okay, well, I'm thinking it's probably Dennis Lehman, I'm looking for a name.
Dennis is here, yes.
So, so Dennis is the person that's in charge of monitoring the special use permit?
That would be code, yeah, and it's a combination, because planning department as well has use permits and things, but yes, they're, they're the, they're the face of code compliance.
And Dennis, is there any compliance issues that you're aware of?
I've been up to the site several times, I saw no obvious or overt issues with the temporary use permit that was out there. There's always some paper, some other things blowing around, but I saw no overt issues there at that time.
Thanks. That's all I had, Mr. Richard.
One question, I'll just ask Dennis while you're up here, just because I like hearing Dennis talk.
Thanks.
Hey, Dennis, I, I would assume this is going to be kind of like the majority of other code issues in the county. We, we are not staffed to the level to where we can proactively be driving throughout the county and be looking for code violations, whether they're building or permit violations, but if there is a complaint, or a, a neighbor does feel that there's going to be, or that there is a violation of the special use permit, that's when you would respond, correct?
We have responded to those complaints, yes, very, very much so.
Okay, all right, so if there are issues, should this be approved, you will be responsible in making sure that they're in compliance?
We certainly will, and oftentimes, the complaints are unfounded.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, I have a question for him.
Go ahead.
Dennis, you've already talked about them being out of compliance on the temporary. Do you have any record of that, when we have proof that they are out of compliance when they advertise?
I, I've never received it, Mr. Wells, I've received several comments from you concerning a grinding plant, or some pile of concrete and what have you, at the, oh, Road sixty site, and...
We're, we're talking about this site.
Right, well, that's the only complaints I've received from you concerning that.
So I have to find it and complain to you whenever they bid a job through the RMA, and they're not specked as a commercial plant?
I've not received any complaints for that particular site.
But I, I'm the one that has to point it out to the county? Who, you're monitoring?
I do not have a monitoring program where I go by the sites on a regular basis, I would love to have the staff to do so, but it currently, I'm not staffed at that.
So we have no, nothing in, in place to monitor the temporary net, or a permanent?
We have been out on complaints that we have received, if we do go by sites and see that it is obviously out of compliance, then we do make a stop at that site and attempt to bring that site into compliance.
Who has to bring that to light? The contractor?
Oftentimes, it's our inspectors out in the field, they are neighbors who give us a call. All the neighbors within three hundred feet of this have received this, they know what the complaints are, they know what the issues are, and we're awaiting their calls. I have a code hotline where they can call in anonymously, and to date, I've not received any calls from that plant specifically on a code-related issue. Now, planning may have received them during these appeals and what have you, I have not received them.
Okay.
I, I'd just like to say that what, what we appear to have here is, we, we don't have physical complaints or code violations with activities going on. What, what Mr. Wells is talking about, a competition and doing, selling and advertising, Dennis wouldn't be aware of, of that. We, we, and we haven't received any complaints about ongoing processes at the site. However, we have been aware of competitors concerned about bids, and, and those things, the, the county has not chosen any bids with them, they, they kind of shot the, the lead here to try to get out in front of this, they assumed there was no, assuming there was no appeal on this past one, they weren't the low bidder. So, in the future, if this, if they're not hindered by the temporary use permit that, that restricted them from that, there won't be a need to monitor them, because they have a use permit.
So they, they assumed that they were going to get their permit, and they were going to be able to bid publicly? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I, I'm, this is an assumption that the applicants are here, I don't know what date they said submitted that bid, the, the permit was approved in May, I, I don't know what, what date they filled that out, and what date they submitted, but nevertheless, we, they're not the low bidder.
We have violations in, oh.
Again, competitors have complained that there's been competition, and, and, and they're, they're held with restrictions. We're, we're not aware of any bids that have gone through, that have been sold through that.
I just want to know what the consequences are for stepping over the line. Now, you have a set of rules here, and the rules have been violated.
Mr. Wells, I think, I think, I think, I think we've followed your rationale here, so I don't think there's any reason to beat it to death, I think what was stated was, when they, when the appeal was, when they, when they, it was granted to them to do the special use permit by the special, by the planning commission, unless or until there was an appeal, they were of the opinion they were going to actually have the, the permission, because it was granted to them. And so they, in the meantime, submitted a bid, which they were, which was not awarded to them, and then you've also reported, reported back issues back in two thousand thirteen, which has already come before this board under special use permit, and I remember that was handled at that time. There was advertising, they did not recognize that they were not supposed to be advertising, they, they submitted, they told the board they had not actually done any sales, even though they had advertised at that time. I noticed that one of the letters you have here talks about listing the site, but when I read further in the letter, it says, it talks about sales being from Avanale, there's no indication of sales or anything being taking place from the Isalia plant. Anyway, so I think we, we got your, your point, your... You're, you're, you're raising the question about how closely these things are monitored, if they don't, if they're not, and I can tell you that if they violate the special use permit, there are a range of things that can be done by the county, bring them into compliance, require them to, to, the special use permit can be withdrawn, um, if it's, if it's.
Back in two thousand twelve when we have shown.
Can you, miss, can you use the microphone?
Need to use the microphone there because we are being recorded.
So in two thousand and twelve, when we showed the evidence that they were in violation, what was the consequence?
Well, they quit because at, at the time, they didn't understand they weren't supposed to do that. But we're really not talking about that today. We're really talking about what is the issue going forward? That was back in two thousand twelve. The issue which is really pertinent today in my mind are, are where, where are we today? The, the special use permit application itself and going forward is what we're really talking about.
Okay. So, uh, in other words, even the two thousand fifteen bid, they were assuming that they would have had the permit by then and would have had it covered.
And they would have but for your appeal. Okay?
Okay.
Now, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing, so anyone wishing to address the board on this matter?
Mr. Chair, before you open the public hearing, I just want to make sure that I am fully transparent and disclosing that I did meet with, uh, David Cruz, um, a few weeks ago, um, and that did not affect or have any impact on my decision today. I'm, uh, as many of you know, and everybody in the public seems to know as well, that I'm willing to meet with anybody anytime, anyplace, so I just want to make that known.
If you're going to make a disclosure, I was going to wait until after the public hearing, but I can do that myself. I have met with both Mr. Wells and with Mr., and with the, uh, the, the, I'm sorry, the Pabbage Company representative, Dave Cruz. So I've met with both of them. Again, my decision will be made upon the information brought to us today, submitted by the staff report, the EIR, and the public hearing, which we're about to conduct. Uh, I don't know if anybody else has any disclosures they need to make at this time?
Nope.
Not, all right. We will open the public hearing. Those who are here to speak in favor of the project are at this time are invited to come forward, give us your name and address.
Do you have a preference, Chair?
No, either, either the microphone.
Good morning, thank you very much. Chair, supervisors, Mike Durkey, on behalf of Pabbage Construction. I'll keep it very brief. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. I'm not sure if the clock is running against us, as I believe we would have equal rights to present our side, but we actually don't need them. Uh, we want to thank staff publicly for the excellent job they've done. I think you'll find for any asphalt plant in this county, more thorough work has been done on this project, a more detailed environmental impact report, more thorough mitigation measures and conditions of approval that my client has willingly agreed to. Uh, I have with me, uh, today, all of the representatives that you've seen in the past, Mr. Pabbage, uh, Mr. Cruz's, uh, Mr. Brian Bound is all here with us today. We can address anything raised by Mr. Wells if you prefer. Clearly, the bid that went out on June eleventh was, as, uh, the chair said, was assuming a valid permit, but even there's language that is omitted from the slide that said this is contingent upon us having a valid permit. So we have not broken the law, we have not violated any of the rules. We look forward to being a successful business in your county, bringing revenue and jobs to the county and ourselves profiting as well. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions by board members? Not at this time, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the project? All right, anyone who wants to speak in opposition?
Good morning, sir. Good morning, my name is Mitch Brown. My business is at fourteen two hundred, Road two eighty-four in Porterville. I operate six mine sites, one asphalt plant, a rock cushion plant here in Tulare County. When submitting information to Tulare County when permitting my facilities, I've always been truthful and presented all the information for each permit and special use permit. I have reviewed the documents of the Pabbage permit and am appalled by the inaccuracies in the information that was submitted for the special use permit. As well as Mr. Wells has presented, I hope you guys read that very well before making a decision. Tulare County currently has four permitted asphalt plants and all three of these plants are located at the source of the rock. These plants, uh, permitted are running at about twenty-five to thirty percent capacity right now, and one of the sites is idle due to lack of market demand. The existing facilities are capable of meeting the, the demand of Tulare County and then some. So therefore, the, I, I'll finish up and then I'll go back to this. The proposed permit is, if granted, will take away business from the other plants in Tulare County. It will also add undue emissions and ox and CO already polluted, already polluting our San Joaquin Valley due to the additional truck trips required to transport the material to the site. At the planning commission held on May twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, David Cruz stated that by approving this permit today, and the community would have benefit by lower cost construction costs and by having the asphalt plant closer to the projects. This is in fact not true if you were to look at the bid submitted for Tulare County for the material that their costs are higher. Thank you for doing that. More like, more than likely due to the fact that the material has to be hauled in from a plant from an aggregate source about twenty-five miles away. Mr. Cruz also stated that the project would bring sales tax revenue to the county. The sales tax income will not change because it will only redistribute the existing asphalt plants to the Pabbage plant because we already are underutilized now. As one of the original members of the group opposed the public staging area, it was, that was granted to Pabbage, it was my understanding that those of us in the group would be informed of any changes to the permit. Tulare County RMA failed to notify myself and others that addressed their concerns, that addressed their concerns to the board in June two thousand thirteen. This group also had several meetings directly with Tulare, uh, RMA following the presentation, presentation to you, the board of supervisors. I would like to, uh, recommend to the board of supervisors that unanimously appeal the, to unanimously appeal the permit, uh, PSP fourteen oh four one, due to the lack of notification of interested parties, as well as the inaccuracies in the permit and documents. Can I go on and finish up? Thank you. And I would be glad to answer any other questions. Uh, my phone number is seven eight one six three eight nine, my office phone, my cell phone is three 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 two nine nine four, and I would be glad to answer any questions after this. Couple of things, um, I want to address the sales to Cart Mill or to the, out of this plant. They did take, I am actually working with, um, Tykert, and there were truckloads of material delivered. It was class two sub base material in June to Cart Mill, and I was not, my plant was not utilized. So I'm just concerned that it coming from a smara, you know, we, we pay you guys about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, I know forty thousand dollars a year for all of our smara mines and stuff like that. And that material was taken from their facility and transported to Cart Mill, which is against your temporary operating permit. That is one of the things that I have a problem with. Um, you know, just, and by the way, I just want to make sure that I understand the permit. This permit is just for an asphalt plant. It doesn't mention crushing, screening, stockpiling. It says rap will be used. They must be going to process the rap off-site and be moved into this. So where's the trucking allowed for that? I think those are one of my concerns that are the sales going to be from this just an asphalt plant and just asphalt? That's the way the permit reads. The other thing that they are gonna, they are getting granted an eight thousand ton a day permit. I want you to take, I would like you to look at that. If you take the in and out loads of eight thousand tons a day, twenty-five tons to the load, calculate that out on your own when you have a little time, take the stuff that Wells put together and the EIR. It's a truckload every thirty seconds leaving and entering that plant if it all happens in one day and which can. You guys are here to grant a permit for a truckload, the eight thousand tons a day. It's not, you know, it's not broken up, it's, it's the ability. So please look at that and take a great concern in the traffic study that was done. And, you know, the second thing is that I think it's your decision to at least take another look or appeal this today, but I'm kind of curious. The public hearing says request from resource management to deny the appealed filed by Houston. I mean, are they already making up your mind today for you, you got to deny it? I'm just, just was a little curious.
I'd like to respond to that very quickly, and that is that, um, a, a number of years ago, this board asked our staff to make a recommendation to us. We are the, we are the ones who make the final decisions, but we've asked them to make a recommendation, what they believe the, the facts to be and what they believe the proper outcome should be, but this board will make the final decision.
Okay. Do you have any questions for me? Anybody? Love to answer them.
No. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Again, please take a good, long, hard look at the other facts in this case and just maybe it's worth, worth looking at.
Anyone else wishing to speak this morning? Uh, all right, if not, we, you, you, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Good morning, my name's Sammy Deuce and address is one four two zero zero, Road two eighty-four in Porterville. Um, I am an employee at Porterville Rock and Recycle. I'm responsible for all the mine site reporting that we do, both to the county and to the Office of Mine and Reclamation every year, as follow, as, along with, um, monitoring our special use permits that we have with the county and making sure that everything operates smoothly within those. We have annual inspections from the Tulare County RMA on our mine sites. I don't remember one on a public use permit. So unless there's somebody calling and saying that we're violating something, there's never any real monitoring of those special use permits. What I'm asking today is who's going to monitor this special use permit? Is it only going to be monitored when we call with a violation, that they're in violation, that they're doing something they're not supposed to do? Who's going to monitor the traffic? The Department of Transportation recommends how many trucks per hour should go through, but is there anybody policing that? Is there anybody policing the route? They say the trucks are supposed to use such and such route, but what's going to stop them from using another route and put undue stress on other roads in our county? Who's going to audit their books to make sure that the county of Tulare is getting their fair share of the tonnage that they report? You know, we've started out, um, on my computer at work, there's a weekly reminder to check the board of supervisors agendas, just to make sure that there's not something that's going to affect our business, that we, we don't get the Visalia times delta. Maybe there was something publicized in there that we didn't get. So it's my job to monitor the board of supervisors agendas, to make sure that there's something that's not going to be before you that's going to affect our business in some way. Now I'm going to start monitoring the planning commission meetings too, I found out. So that's one more thing I've got to put on my job. So some other things I'd like to, to bring forth to you too is I've got a copy of the package that was taken to the planning commission, and along with this is the resolution of the permit. And I'd like to bring out that in the first paragraph of the resolution, it says item three, to conduct retail commercial sales of asphalt. It doesn't say class two base, doesn't say sand, doesn't say rock, anything else. This resolution is for the sales of asphalt only. So going back to the county bids and the material to Tykert, they were in violation of this because that wasn't asphalt that they were selling. I'd also like to say that, um, the nice map where the gentleman drove, drove about, wrote with a red pen on the landscape and it's going to go on around that thing, that wasn't part of this map. I can show you the map in here, but it wasn't part of the map that was done for the planning commission. That came about after this appeal was filed. One more thing is that the, um, the land, or the, sorry. The additional things that they were going to pay for to the community, again, that came up after this appeal. It wasn't in this document that they were going to pay for it. It all came up after the appeal to make it look like a rosier picture to the Tulare County. That's all I have to say. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this this morning?
Mr. Chair, only if.
Name it again, name.
Oh, I apologize. Mike Durkey, on behalf of Pabbage Construction, only if there are any questions remaining that you'd like answers to.
Questions? No?
Thank you, sir.
Uh, this will conclude the public hearing, and, um, we have this matter, uh, on for closed session, and since we've had new information presented to us, I would like to go back into closed session and then meet with our counsel on this matter this time. All right, board is, uh, back in session after having consulted with our counsel and, uh, at this point in time, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to tentatively deny the appeal and direct staff to bring back, uh, written findings next meeting.
Uh, which will be two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
We have no meeting next week.
And those findings will address the issues that were brought up today by the appellate?
Correct.
Okay. With, with that, I can second the, uh, the motion.
Any further discussion or comments? Motion by Supervisor Sheed, a seconded by Supervisor Van Appel. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous, so we'll be back here in two weeks. Public hearing is closed, the, uh, there will be the ability of anybody who shows up at that meeting to speak to the findings that are presented by the staff after the, after this hearing. Uh, we have no further matters from our general session. We do have one item in closed session, I believe, is that right, counsel?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have some items for closed session. We have remaining B and E and off is F and G are the remaining items.
Right, very well. Thank you. Michelle, do you want the jeans?
And there will be no announcements out.